Where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe. Providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Pinsky truck rentals. Details at plumuslake self-storage.com.
Constitution of the state of California against all enemies. You bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution. The Constitution. You take this obligation freely without any mental reservation. It will well and faithfully be upon you.
I do so.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
So just super quick. Renee Soto-Julesman, Tyler Vitaltolu, we just call him V. So name goes a little way across. I've had the distinct pleasure of teaching both of these young men at the Police Academy and recruiting them from the Uba College Modular Academy. Renee was set and destined to go to Woodland, but we steered him back towards Marysville and we're glad to have him. Tyler, and he's, well, I mean, you just look at him, he's a tough guy, but he was tough, he was a tough negotiator. We negotiated for, I don't know, probably about six or seven months. I kept trying to get him to come to work for me and, I don't know, he was kind of knocking at Rockland's door for a hot minute and I kept begging him and then I was, you know, begging and begging. I think he felt bad, but at the end of the day, you know, he's here, we're happy to have both of them. They were super strong in the academy, super smart and just fit the mold for the city of Marysville about being community oriented, dedicated. Talked to his family at graduation with Tyler, and I know this about Renee too, is about devotion and commitment to communities and families. So which is a big thing for the city of Marysville and the rest of our staff and they've been doing a great job so far. So welcome aboard, both of you. I'm proud to have you serving the city of Marysville and the department. And so I don't take up too much of our time, can I get Marissa and Alejandra up here?
Let's gotta feel good. Oh boy. We now move to the community consent calendar. Oh boy. Let's see, individuals wishing to address the council concerning consent calendar items or in items not already on the agenda. You're here in the gallery, you can get a speaker's card from the clerk and you'll be called in order. You're online and interested in speaking, raise your hand and you'll be recognized in order. If bringing up a matter not on the agenda, please recall that. This council is not by law, not able to engage on any such matter. Have any documentation you'd like to get to the council, City Clerk 526 C Street, Marysville 95901. Before we go any further, we'll let the families leave, that was great. Madam Clerk, any public comment?
I received no public speakers cards.
Thank you ma'am. We then move to the consent calendar. All members, all matters on the consent agenda are routine, therefore approved by one motion unless a council member or city manager first requests that a matter be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. What's the will of the council?
Move to brief, I'll second.
Moving seconded, for the discussion noting none, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk? Moving right ahead. Now, I do not see the citizen who wanted to talk about the refuse can location unless that person is here. We have no one on this. Noting that, we will defer on that. Parks discussion and the contact, there has been a suggestion on the hours of operation or hours of use or when, when the city parks should be closed. When are they open, when are they closed, are they open 24/7? What are the rules?
Currently.
11:00 PM to 4:00 AM. 7 to 4. And it had been brought up as a matter that someone had suggested sunrise to sunset, sunset to sunrise, which seems, have seemed extreme. But the topic has been brought up several times by people concerned about, this is actually the people at the Rosalini crew. And God bless those folks, I mean, they're dealing with cleaning up human feces from the gazebo. And that property does get abused. Told them I'd put that on the agenda and we'd discuss it, I don't really have a deep feeling about it. I don't know, I'd be interested in inputs from law enforcement certainly. From Public Works, from other members of the council. I think it's worthy of conversation, I don't think we're going to take this anywhere specifically tonight, but it is a problem. And Ellis Lake Park is clearly one of the problem areas, there's other parks certainly. Chief, can you comment on this or do you have any thoughts you'd like to share? You don't have to, but if.
We met with Mr. Shad and I in Public Works, we had met with the Rosalini crew last Friday morning at about 8:00 AM here in City Hall and discussed these matters. And, you know, we listened to the concerns about the closure of the park, but once we explained it, they understood, you know, the need to probably not go to that extreme from 11:00 to 4:00. You know, people are getting off at, you know, you have the time change, so right now it gets dark around 8:30, almost close to 9:00, but then yet other half of the year or other part of the year gets dark at 5:00 o'clock. So people are getting off work and they want to go enjoy the park or they want to go for that walk. Or when, you know, the infrastructure is invested in around the lake, like the city wants to do and with our community partners and redoing the sidewalk and attracting more people down to the lake, right? And to be able to utilize those services, there's a need to keep it open, you know, past, a little bit past dark and we're going to put new lighting up there. So they were understandable of that. So we don't really, we didn't, we didn't come up with a definitive, they understood, you know, the need not to close it at dusk or sunrise and sunset. Like some parks and other jurisdictions, you know, the 11:00 to 4:00 was made because of the maintenance for the park, for the sprinklers, so that way we at least have the parks cleared out for when they were watering at that point in time. Cause that was the most ideal time to try to water the parks and keep also some of the riffraff out of there. So, but other than that, we have our enforcement that's still happening down there. We are gonna, we did talk to the Rosalini group about switching up some scheduling with our community service officers and, and, you know, modifying some days during the week. And not the same days, but sporadic days to do some evening enforcement down there to kind of help stay up on top of that. And they were satisfied with that at the end of the meeting.
I live right on the park and in fact, I opened a couple of windows and it's a large part of my entertainment, just watching what's going on at the park, people walking by. And I've noticed this year, and I've commented to Mr. Shad and complimented him. I've noticed an uptick, a significant uptick in my experience and I've lived there six years now, almost six years. In the amount of people walking around the park. There's more activity, it's clear to me, and I don't, I don't believe in coincidences, the lake a lot better right now. We've been experimenting with methods to keep the water managed, I mean, it is essentially a huge stagnant pond that we have to apply chemicals to, to keep it, the appearance and other factors acceptable. And we're looking for a better way, but along the way, we've, the appearance is wonderful. I've seen more hatches of geese and ducks than I've seen in past years. The lake is just healthier right now and people want to enjoy it. At 11:00 to 4:00. Could move that a little bit, I wouldn't go later, I don't think I'd go earlier than 11:00 and it seems, if it's been working and I'm not, you didn't, I didn't hear an objection from you and you're the folks who are primary contacts on issues relating to the park. Mencenzo, do you have any comments? Mr. Carrizo.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, specifically for Ellis Lake, I would recommend we keep it at 11:00. Other parks, we could look at closing them earlier, but Ellis Lake is our central point and we're also trying to develop restaurants and whatnot, also our master plan. So if you want an evening stroll, you want to, you know, be out there past dark.
If we make it midnight, right? Please, go ahead.
So there's a time in my life where I lived actually on Ellis Lake, you know, behind Dairy Queen right there. And two and a half decades ago, when there was a time that I actually used to like to do physical cardio work, I used to run around the lake, but it was usually about 11:00, 11:30 at night and kind of go from there. I don't believe that 11:00 is too off of what we currently got. And unless we have reports of through our police department saying that this is going to be a problem, then I don't really necessarily see a reason to change it at a particular point. I mean, with total respect to the Rosalines and everything they do and bless them in their efforts, I get it, I understand. But individuals decide to do things that defecate, they do that anywhere, anytime, whatever the case is. I don't really see the need to change things at the time unless we get a recommendation by our staff, which I will listen to what our staff says. But it sounds as though our staff says that right now 11:00 is okay, let's just keep it the way it is unless we necessarily have more analytics telling us that this is not a good idea. I base that upon my personal experience as well as our past experience that we got. I mean, in my hearing that our staff wants to do something different, that's more important to me than anything else. And I ask that to, you know, Mr. Carrazo and Chief Sacks. If we're not, then I say leave us that as quo.
Go ahead. So I can tell you the outcome of the meeting was that we do not recommend changing the hours. There may be other ways to solve the issues that the Rosalines bring up. And one, there were a couple of items that came out of that meeting. One was the whole concept of more legitimate activity reduces the amount of illegitimate activity. And by getting more activity on the lake, even in the evening, it would deter the vagrancy, the vandalism, the camping. We also talked to the Rosalines about how we could more effectively monitor it. And I don't think we've solidified this yet, but thought process is that the Rosalines can, the crew can tell us where the hotspots are basically by the messes that are left. And our police department can, can enforce based on those spots, so they're not having to look over the entire lake. And that can be some ongoing communication. From a physical standpoint, things like removing places where campers can hide or another. And I think we were going to work on right the north side of the parking lot adjacent to the ballpark. There's some pretty high brush that people have been camping in. So those are the types of things that I think we've come to an agreement with the Rosalines on that we should try. And I think once we explain that the idea is to get more activity, legitimate activity, even in the evening out there, I think they understood.
Chief Sacks, just for a little clarification, our CSOs are mostly during the daytime shifts?
Yes, so we have two community service officers. One is assigned to homeless outreach and engagement and code enforcement, which keeps her undyingly busy.
Yes, I get that.
And, and then the other one is assigned to our vehicle abatement program and helps handle the calls for service. So they're both during the daytime, Monday through Friday. So we're looking at picking a few, like every other week or something like that. So once every couple of weeks, it'll be an evening shift and we'll pick different days to kind of keep everybody on their toes to do some enforcement action down there at the lake. Then one of the other things that was discussed in that meeting as well was to maybe some increased signage. But, you know, Mr. Shad and I talked about that too, as long as it's within reason, because they wanted, you know, everything written on there that you can't do, which that's just not legitimate to do. I mean, your sign will be, you know, 20 by 20 and it'll just look ugly. So it's just one of those where within reason to put up some additional signage at some key points around the lake, just as a reminder to people that the park does close at 11:00 and opens back up at 4:00.
Thanks Chief, I appreciate that, because I was trying to figure out whether the CSOs work different hours and now you're telling me they might potentially in their future work different hours. Cause I know our regular officers are just busy in general at that particular hour. So, and I would also agree with you in the fact that signage is not necessarily a deterrent. Cause in my business, I got signs everywhere and they don't read any of them. And so a good fix is hard to say right now, but as long as we're willing to flex and be available to appreciate what the Rosalines are doing as well as stick with our current operational standards. I say let's go from there until we have to change and then do we do globally? I think that we should do it through every park, not necessarily through one specific park. That's what I got, thank you.
Good Chair. In our Ellis Lake Improvement Plan and Grant, I know we've had a couple of town halls and some different discussion on that. But I'm correct, aren't we going to see some improved lighting along the walkways and the pathways? That's going to make a huge difference on what goes on there in the evening time. And for your folks to be able to spot people around the lake and that, that's maybe one of the most important things that we could emphasize is that the lighting is going to improve here in the next year.
Well, the grant only covers a small portion of the lake. The master plan will include lighting recommendations all the way around the lake. And then we'll be looking for funding to do the rest of the lake. But the intent is to make it so it's well lit around the lake for that walking path. And that should, once again, increase jogging, walking during the evening. And that tends to decrease the amount of vagrancy around the lake.
I was thinking about lighting also. In addition to lighting, and I'm bringing this up in other contexts, low circuit TV, key locations. If there's problems, you can go back and see what they were. It's a force multiplier for police and dealing with solving, solving problems that might emerge. Lighting, absolutely lighting and you're being watched sign, low circuit TV, I think it it might have an effect.
This, next statement might dovetail into our budget item too, so I don't want to cross over on anything. But an idea that might help with this, and you were talking about the CSOs, right? And I don't know what would go into this for your department, but would be the, an idea of a new CSO position or another CSO position. That's a, what I have in mind would be like a bicycle CSO that would have a route that would go through downtown and then would go around the lake and then would come back into downtown. And would circle that route throughout a six or eight hour shift and have a police presence. Cause that's where we seem to deal with the majority of our vandalism, is in the downtown corridor and around the lake corridor. And that's where, that's where it all targets. And it's not a matter of, you know, it's the duties of a CSO to be their community service officer. Might be something to be worthwhile to discuss in our budget.
Might be a regular officer, because that sounds, that sounds, that sounds like it has an enforcement flavor to it.
Possibly.
And I'm not, I'm not arguing.
And budget wise, you know, I don't know what that looks like. It's not a, I guess it would, if you were to go officer, you're talking about a patrol officer, but you're not talking about necessarily a unit. But I, and I don't know what backup looks like that either. Whenever you see bicycle cops in other communities, there's always two of them together, I'd imagine for safety purposes. But I think it'd be worthwhile to give it to some consideration and maybe Chief put thought into it and see if it's something.
You're going to have to have two, just so you can do training.
Yeah.
Do the chair, may I ask something on a quick? Chief Sacks, we used to have a bicycle program within your department. Is it still in effect or is that, I mean, I see the bikes hanging.
The bikes are still here.
Okay.
It's just, we've been so shorthanded for the last year and a half with, you know, five positions on hold between vacancies and medical. That, you know, there's just nobody out there to ride them. The guys, the crew that we have now is out in the cars, you know, running all those calls for service. So we were, we're actually trying to get them together so we can go down to Thursdays on 3rd, because we helped sponsor that event. Right. You know, this last, in May, for the bicycle rodeo and we just, you know, just didn't get them done in time to, to get a few of us down there. But, you know, oftentimes, you know, it's, it's everybody stepping up to the plate from admin all the way down to patrol at this point. So, I mean, we're glad to have our two new officers here, but they're in training right now, so they don't get off of training to go on by themselves until sometime October. We have two more in the hopper, so the bikes is something that's near and dear to my heart. Cause I used to ride them on patrols as an officer and a sergeant here and they're very effective and I loved it. I know Sergeant Carroll, he's sitting in the back, he likes riding the bikes too. We've had this conversation a lot lately about getting those back up and going and, and just getting out there. So we are very hopeful, even with the current resources that we will have, whether it's me and Sergeant Carroll or who it is. So we are very hopeful, even with the current resources that we will have, whether it's me and Sergeant Carroll or who it is, we'll have some of us out on bikes hopefully before the middle of the summer.
I would suggest if we go the bike, get back into the bike route, that the city consider acquiring electric bikes. But you can be, it's, you're going to be able to cover a lot more territory more efficiently, and...
We would suggest that too.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if I may, real quick.
These bikes that we have are antiquated. I mean, they're, they were, they were bought like five years before I got here, and I've been here for 23 years. So the little motors that you click the lever and it bounces onto the tire, we still got them. So we can't buy batteries for them, so we're pedaling.
Electric bikes can easily cruise at 25 miles an hour or so, and you get someplace quick.
So, so if I may, Chief, if you're saying is that the program's not gone, just because we're understaffed, it just has been.
Yeah, because it would be an extra duty.